Okay, we're going to start this morning with a presentation by Harry Love proclaiming May 7th through 13th as Wildfire Awareness Week with Larry Cowan.
Good morning, and I'd like to thank in particular Supervisor Ennis for inviting me to come today at the request of Alder Creek Fire Safety Council. I have some people I'd like to introduce first, and then we'll have a brief video explaining the purpose of today's meeting presentation. Maybe they could come stand please, those who came today. We have Paul Gibbs, Steve Sutherland, Fire Chief, Jeff Jefferson, and Bob and Jeff Jefferson from the Upper Tulley Association. They have Becky Redwine, and Ben, also the Upper Tulley. And they have come down from the mountain areas or the foothill areas, and they represent different agencies that deal with fire wildfire protection. This is Wildfire Prevention Awareness Week, and as I think everyone knows, the amount of rainfall we receive this year is considerably less than last year. And that, somebody says, well, that's good news. No, it's not bad news, because last year we had such a growth in those two years that the fuel ladder and the fuels on the ground are tremendous. And that the Alder Creek Fire Safety Council, we developed, we are two years old, we are in Sequoia Crest, and many of our people, as myself, are not residents of Tulare County, but I'm from Kern County. But when I purchased my property about three years ago, the deep fire occurred about three months after I purchased it, and that was a wake-up call. And the people living in Sequoia Crest said, we need to do something to protect our values, valuable items, and the structures, in particular, the sequoias. But one of the largest groves, the Alder Creek Grove, is one of the largest groves of sequoias in California, and it's right next to people's homes. And therefore, we need the help of the different agencies, CDF, we need the help of Forest Service, our good neighbor who surrounds us, and therefore, we would like to make sure that Tulare County, the Board of Supervisors, is very well aware that, again, with your having Steve Sutherland becoming the chief of the county of July 1st, that the Tulare County Fire Department is going to be our chief responder to us. And therefore, the people who live in the foothills, live in the mountains, are very well aware of wildfire. I have about a two-minute presentation, video presentation, that kind of shows you what needs to be done on behalf of this agency, this board, what you need to do to direct the homeowners in order to say that we do prevention. We know wildfire is going to happen, and therefore, it is something that we need to contain the best we can.
So the time to protect your property is now. Defensible space not only safeguards your home, and potentially that of your neighbors, it also helps ensure the health of the forest. But don't get overwhelmed. Start with one project at a time, such as the removal of the lower branches on your trees. On small trees, remove no more than a third of the total crown. On mature trees, you can trim them to six feet or more. This one effort will help break the fuel ladder, keeping a wildfire in check. Then cut back grasses and brush, clean out wood piles. That's a terrific defense in the line of fire. An effective defensible space will reduce the intensity and reduce spread of the fire. Firefighter resources will be spread thin. There is no guarantee how long it will take firefighters to arrive to protect your home. Help that by making your property fire safe.
As you can tell, that was put together out of Kern County, and we hope that in the near future that we can see similar efforts by the fire safety councils in Tulare County, by the Tulare County Fire Department, that we can now look at the idea that the 100-foot defensible space was previously 30 feet, so we've three times, and for many homeowners, that is an issue. So we're hoping that the Board of Supervisors, in proclamation today declaring that this being Wildfire Prevention Week, and that we can look forward that the county supervisors will therefore support the efforts of fire safety councils and other agencies in order to prevent fires, as you saw in the video. Thank you very much.
Harry, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I have a proclamation to present.
Proclamation declaring that May 7th, excuse me, 6th through 12th is the Wildfire Awareness Week. I got a call from the Sequoia RCD, and they have chipped it out. And so we're looking for a beautiful choke. I know that Fire Safety Council is using chippers a lot for the fuels. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now we'll consider the, I want to make a couple corrections first on our agenda. Item number three, the public hearing on Quea River Rock, the addendum item, will be the correction to the printed item in our original agenda. Now we'll consider our consent calendar. Are there any items that may be moved?
Mr. Chairman, we pull item 11 for a quick question.
There's no other corrections or changes, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the consent calendar items four through 13, absent item 11.
Second.
Move in seconded, please vote.
Mr. Ennis?
The vote is somewhat mixed. Could you erase that?
My folder was on it.
Just clarify.
My folder was on it.
The vote is unanimous for approval of the consent calendar, absent item 11.
If I can, one question I had, item 11, I had called Friday and hadn't received word back. Under the maintenance contract, we're being asked to pay for years three, four, and five of the maintenance contract, years ahead of time, and I'm wondering why we can't pay for those three additional years of maintenance when they...
Actually, sir, yes, we were paying, prepaying for years one and two. In years three, four, and five, those were just estimated cost if we wanted to include those at this point in time.
We're not prepaying for those?
No, we're not. The previous page where the summary from the equipment vendor, it talks about 24 months of software maintenance and that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move in seconded, vote. The item 11 passes unanimously. We'll take up on-time items, item number 14.
Mr. Chairman, item 14, as your board is aware, is a request from the Administrative Office of the Courts for a supporting resolution for the new court complex in Porterville. The Administrative Office of Courts have prioritized all court construction in the state and have identified Porterville in the highest priority. They are working to have the funding for the land acquisition and initial architectural design included in the governor's May revise, and they've asked for a letter of support. The county has been working closely with the courts, the city of Porterville, to identify an appropriate site, and in recent discussions with the Porterville Fair Board have identified the existing fairgrounds as a potential. Judge Fortman is here to speak to the matter as well, and I know Supervisor Ennis may have some comments.
Thank you. Judge Fortman?
Morning. As we know, the courts in Porterville have really been in need of addressing, from a facility standpoint, for some time. As Kristen indicated, the AOC has put the Porterville facility on a really high priority for purposes of getting a new facility in Porterville, and we expect one to be built. There's a feasibility report that has been prepared by the AOC. I think it's available for all, but it deals with the criteria and the needs in Porterville. The three-court facility in Porterville is completely inadequate, and the new Porterville Court will be nine courtrooms, 90,000 square feet, 315 parking stalls, 107 employees, with the goal to provide full court services in Porterville. The first aspect of this project is to obtain the property, and I think it's very important that local governments, along with the local court, reach some agreement on what would be appropriate to meet all the needs of the citizens in Porterville, to provide adequate property for the court facility, which has been scheduled at 6.1 acres, but a property close to the court facility that the county can utilize for purposes of district attorney, public defender, probation, and a custodial facility to minimize the issues with respect to security, and all in close proximity with the court. While our local court does not have the ultimate authority, nor the decision-making with respect to the location, the Administrative Office of the Court has that responsibility. But it's been clear that if some united agreement can be obtained with respect to a location, it will be looked upon favorably. We all know that in the Porterville area, there are not a lot of locations that would meet the criteria that is necessary for the court, and this is really the purpose that we need, at least the board's endorsement of a facility or a location which seems to meet not only the AOC's criteria, but the needs not only of the city of Porterville, but the county of Tulare, as well as the Fair Board. And court surely endorses the county's action in that regard. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer any that I can.
Judge, are we expanding Porterville, the number of judges, in a relatively short period of time?
We will. The project is scheduled, assuming funding occurs, in 2011, 2012. We have three courtrooms there now. There will be nine. It's the expectation of our court that we will be providing full service in Porterville, the same service that we provide here in Visalia. We'll be handling criminal cases through disposition, both misdemeanor and felony. We will have civil, unlimited cases that will proceed through trial, probate, family law, and all the various areas that we cover here in Visalia.
I think the question I really wanted to ask is, are we going to have more judges there prior to us building this facility?
The expectation is we will. Right now, we have two newly created judicial positions that hopefully will be filled before July 1. I know the governor's office is actively trying to fill these 50 positions statewide. There is a bill that has been introduced for an additional 50 judges next year. Pursuant to the Judicial Council's prioritization of these 50 judges, we expect to receive two more next year. The Judicial Council has also sent the message to Sacramento that there would be an additional 50 needed the year after. And as we stand now, based on our case numbers, we would expect two new judicial positions that year also. So six new judicial positions in the three years. That would provide us with the judges, really, to fill up this facility in Porterville and hopefully provide to the citizens of Porterville and its surrounding area access to the justice system without having to drive the distance from Porterville to Rich Grove or Terabella.
Not really a question to mine, Judge.
I'm very excited about the fact that, first of all, I think it's great that everybody's coming to an agreement and looking for a good solution that fits all needs, and I'm grateful and happy that we're staying on the funded list. I, as you know, have an opportunity to meet with the Chief Justice every year. Couple months ago when we were there, I, because it's taken so long for them to move this issue, if you will, he expressed a desire to perhaps on the 100th court site, you know, make some big celebration, and he asked me if he wanted me to delay to make sure we were number 100, and I said, no, absolutely, that's not necessary. Let's make sure we keep it in the budget and keep it moving. So I just, I'm really pleased that this is working out so well, and appreciate all of your efforts and the ability of everybody to come together and make this decision quick enough to keep us in the budget and keep it moving.
Judge, you're making me feel really old, because I can remember when I first started practicing law, we had four Superior Court judges in the entire county.
We had three when I started.
So it's pretty amazing to think, of course, there's been a change in the whole system, where we had juvenile, we had justices, or I'm sorry, justice districts where they were not, they were layman judges and so forth. But nonetheless, it's rather amazing to see that kind of growth that's occurred in the last few years, and it just reflects on our population growth and what's happening.
Well, we understand that the Central Valley leads the state in population growth, and our judicial system needs to keep up.
Right.
Judge, I also want to thank you for coming this morning. We've been working hard to get everybody on the same page in Porterville in that area, and John Corkins couldn't be here this morning. He called me though earlier and said that the Fair Board is totally in agreement with the site. He agrees with the city of Porterville and the county Board of Supervisors and the judicial system that that's the best site. But he also wants to reflect that we must be an equitable deal for the fair, too, that they must be moved and be able to find a place, because it's very big that that community, the fair is. But he's also very glad that we finally got everybody on the same page, and we're looking forward, moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my only question is, when's Visalia on, where's Visalia on the list?
I can answer that. Visalia actually is high on the priority list, but I think as a practical matter, it's going to be difficult to put two new court facilities in Tulare County before court facilities are placed in other jurisdictions. There are a number of courts that are deficient, and we all know the economics of county government and the inability to have the funding necessary to do all the things you'd like to do. So there are court facilities that are inadequate in almost every county in the state. And while the needs are great here, from a comparative standpoint, the needs are great elsewhere, and I don't know when Visalia is going to be addressed. A lot of it depends, too, on how the state can obtain the funding, which was initially estimated over $9 billion to address the deficient facilities statewide of the courts.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're still trying to win the lot of...
Oh, we have, I need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we designate the Porterville Fairgrounds as the designated site for the new court facility in Porterville.
Second.
Move in seconded, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Well, we have a few minutes left before our scheduled public hearing. Want to do other comments? Yeah, let's go on to public comments on, please comment on items that are in, under the jurisdiction of the board, but not on the agenda today. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, let's go to Supervisor Ennis.
You're looking at me. Does that mean I'm first?
They're first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think. Last Friday, we had a meeting of the California Partnership for San Joaquin Valley, very productive, some committee reports, a lot of work going on. The blueprint process was discussed. It was held in Kern County. As you know, we moved those partnership meetings around. It was a long day, but I think a very productive day, and we were able to announce and codify our seed grants that will be scattered up and down the valley, and Assemblymember Valines is considering blending another $5 million request for additional seed grants for the partnership for the valley in a bill that he's currently carrying. So we're hopeful that that will happen, because we had such excellent applications, and, you know, the sad truth of it is, we couldn't, we couldn't fund everybody. We had $2.5 million to spend, but every county in the Central Valley, the eight counties that are involved in the partnership, were represented, and a lot of the seed grants were a culmination of efforts. There's one about meth, where they will bring all eight counties together. There's one where the county superintendents from all eight counties have met or looking on a plan. There's a medical empowerment zone, some really creative and innovative ideas that we hope will make a difference for us here in the valley. So the work of the partnership continues. The only other thing I think I have, besides my community meetings, I was in beautiful downtown Tipton last night, as I like to say. As you know, I used to be, for 13 years, I was a resident of beautiful downtown Tipton. So we had a nice discussion about roads and Measure R money, and how important and how effective that will be for some of our unincorporated communities. And I will be attending a meeting for the rest of this week. As you know, I serve on the Board of Directors for the National Association of Counties, and we will have a board meeting in conjunction with the Western Interstate Regional Meeting. So that will be with counties west of the Mississippi, and hopefully they'll all be able to get here, because there's been some turmoil in parts of the country. So I'm anxious to see if everyone makes the meeting and get a report on that. And I think that's all I have this morning.
This is the meeting you need, insect repellent.
I didn't read that in my instructions, but perhaps you can tell me later why it is I would need that, or maybe not. Just tell me that I need it, and don't tell me why.
Supervisor Cox?
A brief report on the activities we've been working on with putting together a gang task force. The list of people wanting to become involved, and organizations wanting to become involved grows on a weekly basis. When, Mr. Chairman, you first asked me to do this, I thought, well, this will be an exciting project, and now I'm finding it to be one of the largest elephants I will have ever attempted to eat. So we're kind of taking it a bite at a time, but we literally have a long list of people wanting to become involved, wanting to know how they can participate, what they want to do. So we're trying to focus this month on getting out to some of the faith-based groups and organizations and talking with them about our efforts. So it's a monument, it's a huge task that you've asked me to work on, and it's keeping Tracy as well very busy, because she's been working with some of the community leaders getting me into those organizations as well. So we're moving forward. We're finding wherever we go, everyone wants to help, everyone wants to get involved. We're just, we're gathering a lot of information. I have a file probably two inches thick of information we've gathered just in the last month and a half. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Supervisor Cox, and I'm sure...
I want to thank you, too, Supervisor Shida, for giving Supervisor Cox this task. It's keeping him busy, it's keeping him out of trouble.
Oh, I beg the differ. I think the staff will tell you I'm still getting into trouble.
Supervisor Worthing?
Mr. Chairman, my comment would be, as you've joined the 50-plus group, you should be careful about your appetite and what you eat. Continue to have some interesting kind of editorial and so forth coming out of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District's eight-hour ozone plan that was adopted at the last meeting on the 30th. The interesting, it was a very good, I thought, article, op-ed piece in the Fresno V this morning by Pete Weber...
From the Partnership.
From the Partnership, that talked a little bit about, gave it more context. I think it's important to note that, because I think it brings some clarity to it, that the air district, and actually going back before the air district was formed as a United Air District, the independent air districts of the various counties, from, if you go back 25 years, we have removed 80% of the ozone precursors in the air that existed at that time, 80%. And so we're now dealing with the next 20%. And of that 20%, to get into conformity with the federal standards, we have to remove 75% of that. When you understand, then, how far we've come, and then how difficult it is to get the last, this next 75% of the next 20%, you begin to understand why it takes time, it takes technology that doesn't even exist today to get us to that clean air. So that's, that context is often missing. People sometimes think, you know, we've got to do something about the air, as if nothing has been done to this point in time. Fact is, the air is much, much better today than it was 25 years ago, and as we tackle this last piece of it, it becomes exceedingly difficult and expensive to get there. I'm confident, however, that we will. And I think we will probably find ourselves getting there sooner than the time that we have allocated, that we were legally obligated to commit ourselves to. But that's the situation with the air board. I have, I have no regrets on the decision made by the board. I believe it was the only responsible and legal thing that the board could have done as a governing board, and so we will move forward. But it does raise a lot of hackles and concerns.
Supervisor Ennis?
The only thing I got to say, I'll be going to Sacramento tomorrow for my last session as a new supervisor.
Ooh, you're going to be a graduate.
Hopefully I'll graduate. You know, I don't know. So I'm a little nervous about that. No, I'm kind of looking forward to that. It's a good group I'm with up there, and made a lot of new friends, and friends I think can help me in the future, too. So looking forward to it.
Thank you. In my district, we'll be having meetings probably by the end of this month regarding Measure R for the unincorporated communities. Our roads department has designated certain roads in our unincorporated communities that they are going to redo. So we're going to meet with the community members and make sure those are the roads that they want done, so we'll have some local input. We also, moving on to the general plan, we are going to include a section on the impacts or preparedness for global warming. It's become apparent that we need to add this section into our general plan. As many of you know, last week I was in Washington, DC to testify in front of a Senate Subcommittee, and the subject was the San Joaquin River Settlement. It was a very interesting meeting. Mr. Dooley was there also, and I think we had about six panel members, and the two, our two senators spoke before the panel. It's hard to say the impact of what the Subcommittee's findings were, but if you have any comments on the settlement, I believe that the comment period is open until a week from this Thursday. So with that, I've used up enough time to where we can go into our 9:30 timed items. And we'll start with item two.
Lori Mercer, Resource Management Agency, Community Development Redevelopment Division. We'd like to discuss the closeout of one of our grants today. We'd like to discuss the closeout of one of our grants today. There is a sign-in sheet that is available and if you wish to sign it, it's being passed around, it's just to indicate you attended the public hearing. This public hearing is being held to review and receive comments regarding the closeout of the Community Development Block Grant Number 03 EDBG 909, to discuss the accomplishments and to provide citizens the opportunity to comment on the grant performance. The county utilized these fun, these grant funds to provide microenterprise training, business counseling, technical assistance, and supportive services to 100, 155 Tulare County residents. As a result of these services, 20 new small businesses were started and 26 jobs were created. The Tulare County Microenterprise Program achieved and surpassed all program goals. All but $35,520 of the grant funds were expended by the expiration date. Because of the creative and quick thinking of staff and the cooperative nature of our state representatives, the state has agreed to transfer the remaining funds to another open grant to provide public services related to freeze relief activities. All local commitments to this program were expended and all milestones were met. We will be coming back to your board at a later date to further discuss this opportunity. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions and to express their opinions. Additional information and opportunity to review the public information files is available upon request. The state continues to consider this program one of the best in the state. The success of this program is due to the partnerships and dedication of the county's program partners, Central California Small Business Development Center and Community Services and Employment Training. The county staff would like to express their appreciation for all their contributions to the program and to staff for all their efforts. If you have any questions?
Have any questions, Board? Okay. Public hearing is now open on this matter. Is there anyone wishing to address the board specifically on item two? Seeing no one wishing to address this item, the public hearing is closed and it's an action item for the board.
Mr. Chairman, for what I, would be proud to make the motion to approve. I think it's great the staff thought quickly on their feet and were able to use the last little bit of funds that were left over off that grant for the freeze relief. I mean, it shows that I, I hate sending money back and I'm appreciative of staff making the effort to make sure that money didn't have to go back and it was kept here for a, a local purpose. So, with that, I would make the motion to approve.
I'd like to second that with the comment that I'm very appreciative of all the work that, Mr. Hayter, that you, your shop and your folks do. It goes without saying that it's always with the best interest of those we serve and as one Supervisor that appreciates it very much. That was a second.
Okay, well, I think we all echo this, Anis. Thank you for your job very well done. Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving to item three, public hearing. We will now take up agenda item three as revised by the addendum. This is a public hearing. Staff will please present this item.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, George Finney with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. As you know on the screen, the, the agenda item three is a public hearing on the appeal by Valley Citizens for Water regarding Surface Mining Permit and Reclamation Plan, H-Number PMR 02-002, for what is usually referred to as the Quea South Surface Mining Project. The site is located east of State Route 245 between Avenue 332 and the Quea River, approximately one mile south of the city limits of Woodville, of Woodlake. The, again, the, as mentioned in the description, the, this is an appeal. Appeal is filed by Valley Citizens for Water. The applicant is Quea River Rock. The proposed project involves the mining of aggregate material with reclamation to a water management facility that will ultimately be taken over by the Quea Delta Water Conservation District. It involves 280 acres, which includes a 40-acre plant site and the depth of excavation would be 45 to 55 feet below ground surface. Again, the details of the project are set forth in the environmental documents that are, were presented to your board, but I would like to call your attention the fact that design features have always been incorporated in the project to protect groundwater levels. I wanted to start out by just giving you a quick background on how we got here today. Going back a couple of years after an appeal by Valley Citizens for Water on, on the Planning Commission's original decision, the Board of Supervisors denied the appeal and approved the mining permit in May of 2005. Subsequently, Valley Citizens for Water filed a, a suit claiming the EIR was inadequate. And then later on in March 2006, the Superior Court ruled that the EIR was inadequate in certain respects, but adequate in other respects. So, we have a situation where you've got an EIR which is part good and part isn't. In August of 2006, your board took action to rescind the earlier action on the mining permit and the certification of the EIR and directed the EIR be revised to address the deficiencies identified in the court ruling. Subsequently, in December 2006, a revised draft EIR was released for public review and that was approximately two, a little over two months, I believe. The revised EIR changes certain sections of the previous EIR. It did not address those sections of the earlier EIR which were found to be adequate. So, what you have before you is a revised EIR and the original EIR, which are designed to serve as a single integrated document addressing the impacts of the project. A final EIR for the revised portions has now been prepared to respond to comments received. And before I turn it over to Mike Rushton from Jones &amp; Stokes for presentation, I just wanted to summarize some recent correspondence that was received. We did get two letters from Dell Strange for Valley Citizens for Water, one raising issues on the notice of hearing and the agency language, I think the last part the, the Chairman already addressed. And another letter also dated May the 3rd, raising issues with the agencies consulted in the EIR review. And then also, we just got a letter, I'm not sure you've even seen it yet, it's from San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, also dated May the 4th. They simply concur with the findings of the EIR on the, their quality impacts and do not raise any new issues. Again, after the presentation, my risk to Rushton, we'll be happy to respond to any questions. Mike?
Morning Board Members. My name is Mike Rushton with Jones &amp; Stokes, Environmental Consulting Firm from Sacramento. And I've been working with your RMA staff for quite a few years now on this project, preparing the SEQA documents for the county. George has given a pretty good history of the SEQA process. I'm going to give a little bit more detail on the, the final EIR and what's in that document, but going back to the original document that is still part of the record for this project, the 2004 EIR that George mentioned, was issued as a draft in April of 2004. You received over 80 comments on that document. At that time, the primary issues that were raised at that time are, are the issues that are continuing to be raised on this project, including air quality impact of the project, flooding and water quality issues associated with the site that was selected and also effects of subs, other projects that may come into the site, batch plants and so forth that might be associated with this project at some future point. The revised draft EIR was initiated in early 2006 to respond to the, the court action declaring the earlier EIR inadequate in three principal areas. What they wanted to see was a revised air quality analysis. They wanted to see some additional technical information regarding the mitigation that was in the document for effects on groundwater quality. They wanted some additional information on the flooding issues on that site and finally they wanted to have a little more information about the batch plants that could at some point be on that site, although there were, there were no applications at this time for any kind of supplemental concrete or asphalt batch plants at the site. So, the draft, the revised draft EIR addressed those principal issues. It did not tackle the other issues from the earlier 2004 document. The court ruled that those had in fact been addressed adequately. So, again, the document, the revised draft EIR focused on the issues I just mentioned. We received comments on the revised draft EIR and a total of 10 comments were received. Five of those comments came from federal, state or local agencies, including Federal Emergency Management Agency, State Department of Water Resources, State Department of Conservation, State Department of Fish and Game, and San, San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District. There are three comments from individuals and two comments from public interest groups, including the Center for Race, Poverty and Environment and the Valley Citizens for Water. Again, the comments that came in in those letters on the revised draft EIR focused on air quality, groundwater resource effects, flooding effects, and the letter from Department of Fish and Game asked for a resurvey of the site to verify impacts that were discussed in the 2004 EIR on biological resources. So, those are the kinds of comments that came in on the revised draft EIR. On April 25th of this year, the revised final EIR was issued to the public. It was distributed to county staff and all those that asked for copies of the document or had made comments on the document. And so, that was circulated earlier. The final EIR again contains all of the comment letters and you, you have a copy of this, it contains responses to all of the comments that came in with those 10 letters. It includes a chapter that provides errata, small changes in the, the earlier draft document, not associated with those major areas. And the principal responses on air quality were in response to letters from Williams Research of Portland, Oregon, and the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District. The technical work done to respond to those comments was done by Sierra Research and incorporated into the final EIR. The conclusions from that analysis were that particular emissions from the operation of the plant and the associated truck traffic were, created significant unavoidable effects. The final document reflects that conclusion. The flooding effect comments came from the Valley Citizens for Water, the Center for Race, Poverty and Environment, Dell Strange, FEMA and the State Department of Water Resources. Conclusions reached in the final EIR that the, the project site would not be subject to inundation in a 100-year flood. The project site is not in the floodway of either the Quea or St. John's Rivers. So, those comments have been addressed. The comments on groundwater hydrology and quality concerns were again raised by Dell Strange, Valley Citizens for Water and the Center for Race, Poverty and the Environment. As a result of those comments, none of the basic conclusions of the 2004 document have been modified. There are no significant unavoidable effects on groundwater resources that we've identified in the final document. That is primarily because that there are a lot of features built into the project and a very complex set of mitigation measures and eventually conditions of approval of this project where, where do it be approved that deal with effects on local wells and the groundwater in the area. And the project was, the project site was resurveyed at the request of the Department of Fish and Game and an appendix is in the final EIR that presents the results of that survey and as a result, we modified a couple of the mitigation measures that were in the original 2004 document and those are, again, reflected in the final EIR. We didn't receive comments on the, the analysis of batch plants that was contained in the revised draft EIR, so that is in there, unchanged from the revised draft EIR. The concerns of the State Department of Conservation Office of Mining Reclamation are addressed in the responses in the final and there were subsequent meetings to, to ensure that we had adequately addressed those comments. As a result of those comments and conversations with the, the department, their, the reclamation plan will be revised to include some additional information that they requested prior to it being approved and also they've requested some conditions be added to the conditions of approval that will be given to the, the county to consider placing on the conditions of approval list. So, the, and the basic conclusion of the EIR is that the project, as it currently is proposed, including the reclamation of the project, has three basic significant unavoidable effects that would require a statement of overriding consideration under SEQA if, in fact, the project were to be approved. And that is that the project is not consistent with Williamson Act situation on the site, the Williamson Act contracts that would require some action there. The direct and cumulative conversion of prime farmland is significant and unavoidable on this project. And then the direct and indirect emissions of particulate matter from the operation of the project are significant and can't be avoided, can't be reduced to a less than significant level. So, that's the final conclusion of our impact analysis. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the documents that we've prepared.
I have a question on the quality of farm ground. Is this my understanding from looking at that ground, is it is very difficult to raise a crop?
I think, yeah, from a farming perspective, I think you're right. If you look at the state farmland maps though, that are developed that we use as guidance on this, part of the site is considered and mapped as prime farmland, other is mapped as farmland of statewide importance. It's a very sandy area because it's, has been subject in the past to overflow from the river and it, and it hasn't been, it's been grazed and, and farmed for cotton, that sort of thing, but it is, the reason we declared it prime farmland is because that's the way the state has mapped it, not because of the productivity of the land for agriculture.
Mr. Chairman, I think you raised a point that, that's come up before this board and that is that the prime ag designation is less than adequate really for dealing with these kinds of issues because there is rather poor farm property that is deemed prime under the designation and, and it, it doesn't help us very much in our determination because there are lands that are much more productive, that we probably should be more focused on trying to preserve, and then we have lands that are still considered prime that are subpar from a farming standpoint and those are, ought to be the properties we, we encourage other alternative uses for and especially in trying to preserve and protect those really good properties.
Any other questions?
Just one comment before you open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. I would like to request one minor deviation in the order of the hearing. Ted Smalley, or TKG, is here to provide some testimony. He's not either for or against the project, he just wishes to provide some information regarding the need for materials in the county. He has a very important conference call to attend to at 11 o'clock, so I'd like him to be given the opportunity to go first.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two reminders for the board before you proceed with this public hearing. First, we'd like to remind the board and the members of the audience that this hearing is a quasi-judicial hearing and that the board's decision in this matter must be based upon the evidence and the record before it. This means that the board's decision must be based upon the evidence and facts presented to it in the written materials in the record, which the board has had the opportunity to review, and in the testimony and the materials that the board will receive during this hearing. Unsubstantiated lay opinions, concerns, suspicion, fears and conjectures, no matter how- how deeply felt or sincere, do not constitute substantive evidence on which you, the board, may make your decision. You, the board, may not make your decision based solely upon the number of people for or against the proposed project, or upon the desires of the majority of the interested parties appearing in this hearing. Second, as a matter of due process, the interested parties in this matter are entitled to notice a reasonable opportunity to be heard and to be advised of the grounds upon which the board makes this decision. For this reason, your decision must be based upon the facts and evidence already in the record or received at this public hearing. The board's decision cannot be made upon information received outside of this process. To this end, any board member should disclose any substantive contacts he or she can recall having on this matter which are not already reflected in the record before the board. Any site visits should be disclosed. If you do not recall any substantive contact at this time, but information received during this public hearing triggers a recollection of a substantive contact, you should disclose that recollection as soon as possible so the members of the public can have an opportunity to hear that and comment on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't been said. To cover that last little bit, my last visit to that site was probably two years or more ago, so I've not had any other feeling, I think that was at least two years ago, maybe more.
I think for the record, Mr. Chairman, I should just state that I have had no substantive connections either as far as a site visit or with any person since our last action on this matter.
In this matter, Supervisor Ennis was not present when we started the hearings and this process, so he will not participate in the vote today. I need to disclose, I've been on the Queer River Rock property before I was elected, so it's two and a half years ago. I've also talked to Dave Harold, the general manager of Queer River Rock, about scheduling this hearing. So, thank you. The public hearing is now open. I have some instructions here. When you come up to the podium to speak, if you could please state your name and your address. There are a large number of parties interested in this matter, therefore, we request that you do not restate or repeat testimony or information, or duplicate any evidence given by the speaker before you, and that you will not read extensively from written materials that you intend to submit to the board. You have a written statement or written materials, we ask that you submit the statement or materials instead of reading the statement or materials into the record. The board will have an opportunity to review any written materials and ask any questions before making its decision. No clapping, cheering, or other out-of-order comments will be allowed. Violation of this rule may cause the room to be cleared. Representatives of the applicant Queer River Rock Company will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Representatives of the applicant, applicant, excuse me, Valley Citizens for Water will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Each other interested party will have three minutes to speak. The only exception to this limit will be at my discretion, and you may not yield your time to others or reserve your time to speak again. I will ask those in favor of the matter to speak first, and those opposed, then those opposed to the matter. I will determine whether a brief rebuttal or replies will be allowed after everyone has an opportunity to speak. When you start your speech, when you start to speak, the clerk of the board will start a clock. That clock is up in your right-hand lower corner of the screen, and a warning sound will, there will be a warning sound when you have 30 seconds left. If you have any written material to submit to the board, please hand them to the clerk of the board. And Michelle, could you please raise your hand? The materials will become public records and the property of the county. If you need a copy, you may request one from clerk of the board after the meeting is over. Please address all questions to me and not to individual supervisors, staff members, or any other person. I will ask for any response I believe that is needed. First, we'll have the applicant. You know, I'm kind of in an awkward position here because I have someone that needs to leave, and he's neither for or against. Maybe I'll have, George, you think it's appropriate this time?
If it's okay with the board, I'd like to have Ted Smalley come first.
Okay. Ted will speak first, then the applicant will have 10 minutes.
Thank you for joining us. Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Ted Smalley, the Deputy Director for TCAG and the Tulare County Transportation Authority. Today, I just want to testify about the material needs that we have facing us and not specifically the project before you. With the passage of Measure R, Proposition 1B and Proposition 1A, a significant investment will incur with transportation funding. Caltrans estimates that statewide over the next 10 years, approximately $110 billion will be spent on transportation infrastructure. For Tulare County, over $300 million in construction projects is projected over the next four years alone. Over the next 30 years, Tulare County with Measure R, other funding sources from state and federal, is likely to see over $2 billion in transportation infrastructure projects that will have funding and a need for materials for construction. Again, these are likely funding sources in which we will have the money, and we will need the materials to be able to deliver the projects. While there are few excuses the California Transportation Commission will ever allow for cost increases, I assure you, there is the greatest concern from the CTC and the state about having enough aggregate supply to meet the needs throughout the state. The impacts of having to truck materials from sites outside the county or the state will simply result in significant cost increases to our projects. Also, the farther the distance to obtain materials results in increased air quality impacts. Simply put, from an air quality standpoint, the closer to the site, the better. I'd like to close with just one example. While it's a very simplistic example, it is an example that this board recently took action on. On March 27th, the board supervisors approved the construction contract for the Reservation Road STIP project. There were five bids that were presented to the board ranging from $169,000 to $379,000. The difference was one of the companies was located very close to the site and therefore had significantly less transport costs. For a large project, this transport cost would be significant. Again, thank you for the opportunity to comment, and just want to, again, pass on, while I know all of you serve on the TCAG board, the importance of materials now that we have money to make sure we can deliver those projects in a timely way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalley. Now, we have Representative from the applicant Queer River Rock Company.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I'm Dave Harold, General Manager of Queer River Rock Company. And I would like to briefly emphasize the need for the project, which Ted and other speakers will do, and the commitment of this company to do things right, which is in the record. The record is considerable, and we have our technical team here this morning. I'm going to introduce them, but not ask for testimony. They are here in case you have questions. I will, however, ask Whit Manley to follow me to the microphone here. Our legal team, if they'd stand and just be recognized, Whit Manley of Remy Thomas Moose and Manley, our SEQA attorneys, Dan Dooley of Dooley-Hur and Pelzer. Our consultants include David Brown, Resource Design Technology, who did the reclamation plan, Joe Countryman, MBK Engineers, who analyzed the flooding impacts, Tom Elson, Luderf and Scalpanini, who did the hydrology work, and Alan Daly and Jeff Atkins from Sierra Research, who did the air quality analysis. I'm going to enter into the record Map 52 from the State Geologist, which indicates that Tulare County is one of the three counties in the state with the most critical shortage of aggregate supplies. I'd also like to introduce our owner, John Altucker, who is here. And just to give you an idea how long this project is going on, when John started this, he was the same age I am now, and I was a redhead. I will yield to Whit Manley, I'll get you.
Good morning. My name is Whit Manley with Remy Thomas Moose and Manley. It's a law firm located in Sacramento, and we specialize in environmental law. I was a little worried the clock wasn't going to be big enough for me to read with my poor eyesight, but thank you. I'll move it along at a good clip because I don't want to take more than the 10 minutes you've allotted. I do want to encourage you that to the extent that you have any questions about the technical analysis that is embodied in these documents, now is the time to ask. As David indicated, all of our technical consultants are here. These are the people that performed the analysis. They would be far better equipped to answer your questions than I would. The issues that were addressed in the revised draft and revised final EIRs are inherently technical in nature. Air quality modeling, the design of the system to protect groundwater and ensure that there are no groundwater impacts, the flooding issues. I'm a lawyer, I'm not the right person to answer those questions. Engineers are the right people, and happily, we have them here. So with that, I do want to talk about a couple of procedural issues surrounding the hearing today. Throughout the environmental review process, right up until the hearing today, you've received a number of comments about process. Have documents been distributed adequately? Has adequate notice been provided? I'd like to talk about those. First of all, some commenters objected to the fact that the revised draft EIR analyzed only certain issues rather than all the issues surrounding the project. And in fact, the EIR did focus on the issues that Mike Rushton touched upon and did not revisit other issues where the analysis was found adequate, such as transportation impacts. SEQA specifically authorizes that approach. I want you to know that. SEQA provides specific authority for recirculating portions of a document, not the whole thing. SEQA, notwithstanding popular belief, is not supposed to be an endless spin cycle of revisiting the same issues over and over again. It's okay, even when a judge finds certain parts of the analysis to be inadequate, to revisit those issues and focus upon them, and that's exactly what happened here. The notice of the availability of the revised draft EIR was circulated to the State Clearing House. Adequate notice of it was provided, and adequate time period was provided in which to provide comments. In fact, it was well in excess of the time required. The final EIR was published in April of this year, and that too was distributed exactly as it is supposed to be. If folks submitted comments on the draft EIR, they received a copy of the final EIR, including responses to their comments. And in particular, the agencies that commented on the document received responses to their comments, and they did so more than 10 days in advance of today, which is the specific notice requirement under SEQA. That's under Public Resources Code, Section 2109 2.5. So procedurally, that requirement was fulfilled. This hearing has been properly noticed. There have been requests for a continuance provided to you. Those requests allude to the fact that there is a requirement that you provide 60 days or 45 days' notice. That those requirements do not exist. The requirements under SEQA have been complied with. So, there is no authority for demanding more. Now, it is within your discretion to provide more, but it's completely within your discretion. Under SEQA, you have procedural obligations. They need to be complied with, but having complied with those obligations, you can move on. And those have been complied with here. In fact, there is a provision in SEQA, it's Public Resources Code, Section 2108 3.1, which specifically directs the courts. SEQA is complex enough already. It's hard to comply with, it's a complex statute, but if you comply with the statute, you're done. You can move on, and the courts are directed not to invent additional procedural or substantive So with that, there are a couple of, we've reviewed very carefully the findings and the conditions of approval, the mitigation monitoring plan that have been prepared by your staff. And there are a couple of elements of the mitigation measures that I'd like to suggest that they get tweaked. In my view, the mitigation measures, as they're currently drafted, are adequate, but the courts are being very, very stringent these days about the specificity of mitigation measures incorporated into the project. And just so that there's no doubt about that issue, there are a couple of mitigation measures I'd like to suggest that your staff tweak. If you're inclined to consider the project, that they'd be able to come back to you with an approval package that reflects these tweaks. One is, there are a couple of mitigation measures aimed at ensuring that there are no adverse impacts to either ground or surface water. These, in particular, I want to reference mitigation measures 3H1 and 3H3. Those require the project to implement best management practices, a list of measures that need to be incorporated into the project by design. If I may, the mitigation measures use the word "may." I'd like you to change that to a "shall," so that there's no doubt those measures will be implemented. Moreover, in mitigation measure 3H3, that addresses the potential for a surface water discharge. This project is designed so that no surface water discharge will occur. In the event that a surface water discharge is proposed, then waste discharge requirements will have to be obtained by, from the regional board. That's in mitigation measure 3H3. I'd like you to add a sentence stating that any discharge will comply with the water quality standards set forth in the basin plan. There are numeric standards with which any discharge must comply. I'd like it to be very explicit that we would have to comply with those water quality Finally, Mike Rushton mentioned the fact that there were some follow-up surveys that were performed on the site for biological resources. Actually, there was nothing wrong with the original EIR on this score, and when those comments came in from the Department of Fish and Game, it would have been permissible for the county to ignore them. Out of an abundance of caution and out of a sincere desire to be responsive to the Department of Fish and Game, Jones and Stokes biologists went out and performed follow-up surveys so that they would have a very recent depiction of the biological resources present on the site. They did identify, they didn't identify the presence of kit fox or burrowing owl, but they did say or conclude that those species could occupy the site at some point in the future. Well, this project has a very long build-out. There are areas that will not be disturbed for quite a number of years. If we were to do protocol-level surveys today of those areas at the site, the surveys would be no good by the time disturbance occurs in those areas because it's not projected to happen for another six, eight, 10 years. So the mitigation measures that Mike has recommended and that we endorse actually requires to do protocol-level surveys prior to engaging in a disturbance of an area where the kit fox or the owl may be present. And they haven't been found, but if they were found, the actual mitigation steps that will have to be complied with are spelled out in the document in detail. Then finally, Mike mentioned the fact that there was certain recommended revisions to the reclamation plan and conditions of approval based on input from the Office of Mine Reclamation in Sacramento. I just want you to know for the record, the applicant endorses those changes to the conditions and to the mitigation measures. Finally, I can't resist mentioning the fact that during your colloquy this morning, Supervisor Conway and Supervisor Rashida both mentioned Measure R, propositions 1A and 1B. There is a major demand for infrastructure improvements to the transportation system in the county. We all recognize that. The impacts to the environment and costs will be significantly reduced if there is a local supply of gravel to serve the North County area. That's exactly what this project is intended to provide. Thank you very much for your time, and as I mentioned, our engineers are here if you have any technical questions. Thank you so much.
This process of taking public comment forms works very well in most situations, but in this situation, because I'm not sure who's for and who's against because of the scheduling we've done, I'm going to ask those that I know who are for, come forward. So, we can start with Bob Keenan.
Mr. Chairman, members of Board of Supervisors, Bob Keenan with the Home Builders Association of Tulare Kings Counties, 315 West Oak Street in Visalia. I am also the Coordinator for the Business, Industry, and Government Coalition of the South San Joaquin Valley, and a member of the Blueprint Regional Advisory Committee. All of those groups support this project, request your approval. All of those groups support this project, request your approval, and it's on the basis that, in order to maintain this economy and to be able to build out as a bractus considering for the next 50 years for infrastructure, the need to have local sand and gravel and local resources to maintain a lower cost and to maintain the production of the infrastructure is needed. Right now in Sacramento, there's legislation that will protect all minerals, all mining, and all other natural resources from any development in their area until such time as those resources have been extracted and used for the betterment of the state, its infrastructure, and its citizens. So on behalf of the three groups I'm representing here today, we urge your support of this project. And I had red hair 20 years ago, too.
Things are getting hard to believe. Now, if I call your name and you're on the opposite side of the argument, please wait until we have the other side to speak.
My name's Ray Wells, and I'm part of Glen Wells Construction. And I'd first like to thank all of you to, considering all comments, and hopefully, the points made will help the board make the wisest decision for the residents of Tulare County. As I said, I'm part of a family-owned business, but it's much more than that, because all of our employees are all -- they have families also. And so as the gravel continues to be depleted, this presents a problem for the future of their families also. Recently, the voters passed a number of measures, including Measure R, and which requires much more aggregates has been brought out. The question is, how are these road projects to be done when not only is there not enough aggregates now, but the question is, how can we import -- would it be possible to import these aggregates? Well, even at $19 a ton for half-inch rock in Fresno, they said, "We will not sell to you people, because we don't even have enough rock ourselves." Our company many times delayed paving projects because a number of times, not only not enough rock, but to allow this depletion to continue would jeopardize the carrying out of these measures to be done. So that in itself would not be fair to the voters. And also, the combined total of years of business between Glen Wells -- or Wells Construction and Glen Wells Construction is over 50 years, and so they've been able to generate much taxes for the county. But we aren't the only game in town. If there's not enough rock, the amount of revenue to the county would be greatly reduced, whoever has the project, because of the problem of our depletion of aggregates. So I would highly recommend you please consider the points that's brought out. Thank you.
My name is Aldeas. I'm with the Department of Transportation. My address is 1352 West Olive, Fresno. I have five copies for you of a letter I'd like to read into the record. Written by Will Kimpton, February 27, 2006. The governor has proposed a strategic growth plan, which calls for $105 billion to be invested in transportation over the next 10 years, plus $2 billion for mitigation of existing air quality impacts from ports and goods moving. In all, nearly half of the estimated $222 billion expected to be raised under the plan is slated for transportation. The governor's strategic growth plan is a historic comprehensive transportation investment package to be incorporated into Go California Mobility Action Plan, designed to decrease congestion, improve travel times, and increase safety. Last year, which was 2005, Department delivered $900 million in highway construction. That's statewide. This year, that was 2006, we're on track to deliver $3 billion. This year, we're on track to deliver, I think it's up to $10 billion. Although highway construction is a relatively minor component of an overall aggregate consumption in California, we are concerned about the availability and pricing. As part of Go California, the Department's statewide strategy is to work with the communities and other state agencies in securing adequate industry capacity for California's needs. Toward this effort, I would like to bring your attention to the tremendous amount of aggregate needed to supply the projects that support the improvement of the state's transportation infrastructure and the need for new aggregate sources. In recent industry capacity expansion workshops, our construction industry partners shared their concerns about the availability of aggregate and other commodities in California. Based upon information from the Department of Conservation, possible cost increases because of potential shortages of aggregate would impact the financial budgets of local, regional, and state public work agencies. At these workshops, the industry also informed the department that the many years it takes to get a new aggregate source through the permitting process, we encourage the development of new material sources for aggregate reserves that are identified and developed within California, but recognize that the permitting of any new mining location must be done in accordance with federal, state, and local laws and regulations while being environmentally sensitive. Please share this information with your planning. Signed, Will Kimpton.
Thank you, Mr. Deas.
My name is Bruce George, General Manager of the Coia Delta Water Conservation District at 2975 North Farmersville Boulevard, Farmersville. Chairman Ashida, remaining members of the board and staff. We appreciate the opportunity to comment at this hearing on this important project. The district's position has consistently been not for or against mining. Our position has been to evaluate the potential impacts on the water resources that might be caused by this project. Evaporation in perpetuity from a mining site post-mining has been a major concern of the district. In addition, the potential impacts to the adjacent lands surrounding the site to the groundwater levels has been a major concern. The Coia South Project is unique in that it was designed from the beginning with features that address these potential impacts to water, such as cutoff walls, a groundwater bypass line and recharge system, and the dry basin, which will eliminate any significant evaporation The district believes that the project design and ongoing monitoring and review -- the review process, as outlined in the environmental documents, provides the design that will eliminate significant impacts to the water resources of the area. But the exciting part of the project to the Coia Delta Water Conservation District is the dry basin concept, which provides the opportunity to use the pit as a water management facility post-mining. The pit will provide opportunities for the district to capture water that would otherwise be lost to our overdrafted basin and provide some incidental flood control benefits. For this reason, the district enthusiastically supports the project as presented. Thank you for the opportunity to address this subject today, as it is very important to the district for the future water management of our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Now, this is when it gets confusing. I'm going to go through the names, and if this -- we're speaking for the applicant.
Hi. Thank you for -- the board for letting me speak. My name is John LaForge. I'm with South Valley Materials. We're a local ready-mix supplier in the area. This was put on me last minute, so I don't have a real official prepared speech.
Could you give me your address?
It's actually 2857 15th Court, Kingsburg, California. Mr. Spaulding hit on what I was going to say, and I know we weren't supposed to repeat, but the direct impact on our company would be if we weren't able to utilize the Coia River rock, is sending our trucks at least an hour and a half away, one way, to another source. Not only would that cause traffic problems, emission problems, but it would put a huge impact on the resources in Kalinga or Porterville, which would have to go either way for our Just in my short relationship with Dave, you know, they've been responsible managers of that resource and have been and will continue to be, mainly because it's what we do, it's how we earn our livings, it's how we feed our families. So we're all very concerned about how that resource is taken care of. Unfortunately, it's not like the logging industry in that we can't replenish that. It's not a renewable -- it's -- once we use it up, it's gone. I wish I had a seed and I could plant a rock field for you, but I can't. Just to throw that out here, I don't have any facts for you, but we definitely need to, all of us, think about the future for our children. If we can't mine aggregate locally, they'll either send us to the mountains, we'll start hard rock processes, which are very costly, unbelievably costly. These are all things we need to think about for our future. I'd like to thank you for your time, and please consider.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm David Jones. My address is 2307 Feins Avenue in Fresno, California. I'm the Regional Manager for the Associated General Contractors of California. We are a nonprofit trade association. We represent contractors who do public works construction throughout the state. We have about 1,200 current members of AGC. We represent highway grading and paving, underground contractors, and general building contractors. I think that you've seen with the passage of Prop 1A and 1B, and then your local half-cent sales tax passage, that people in the area want construction. And we are just here to say that you're lucky in the fact that you have a local community with a mining operation that is very close. Otherwise, this construction activity would have to go outside the area. We think this adds to your tax base, which would be adding to the local community. We also think that this will improve your quality of life in that you'll have construction activities going on locally. We also think that it will help in quality of air. If you have this construction activity going on and you have to go outside of the area, it'll be a lot more pollution in the air. We would ask that you approve the permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Mark Berry. I'm with RJ Berry Jr., Inc., a grading and paving contracting firm that's currently engaged in two projects in Tulare County. And I'd like to just reiterate the points that have been made before me. In particular, it's not often that construction industry representatives are in a position to represent not only construction, but air quality issues and support them. We believe at RJ Berry that as 80% of our NOx, our oxides of nitrogen, come from mobile sources in our air basin, that keeping construction close to the sources of the aggregate is a way that we can reduce that. So we would hope that you would support this application for a variety of reasons, including the potential to minimize air quality pollutants in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manley?
I spoke.
Go. Okay.
Did you say Wensley?
You're next, Mr. Wensley.
Okay, thank you. My hearing aid is working well today.
Mine doesn't work most --
Chairman Ashida, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Charles Wensley, and I am the President of Viking Ready Mix in the Tulare County area. My address is 9455 East Ellery in Clovis. I've spoken to you in the past on this issue. In the past, I have told you that there was a need for new aggregate sources in the area. I can no longer tell you that. There is now a necessity, and I bring facts, as you've asked for, of that necessity. In January of 2007, our company was forced to switch its aggregate usage in Visalia and Porterville to Kalinga. So we now are putting that traffic on the road. We're renting trucks in Fresno. We're renting trucks from Kalinga. We have almost four times as many trucks on the road now in an attempt to bring the aggregates here that we need for these projects. The quality of aggregates was the problem. As the pits run out, your quality gets less. We're doing projects in Visalia, such as the Coia Delta Hospital, the Visalia parking structure, and in Porterville, we're doing a detention center. These projects require high-grade, quality Portland cement concrete aggregates that at this time, where the pits, being as low as they are, they cannot provide. Coia has always provided them given the right material. With this new permit, they will have the right material. Hauling costs are almost double to Visalia, and the costs are almost four times to Porterville. As has been mentioned many times in here today, the biggest problem, though, is the increased pollution. If the costs are four times, and if they're twice as much, then the rise in pollution is the same. I would really respectfully ask you to please accept this permit, as I think your county and the rest of the state needs more permits. As one more point of fact, as a former chairman of the Legislative Group for the California Material Association, we worked hard to get the, what is now going to be SB 68 passed, which is going to set aside mining areas. That bill is being charged by Sheila Kuehl, who may be, if anybody knows her, she's probably one of the leading environmentalists in California, and she has recognized the need for aggregates in local areas. You can read SB 68 and see it is friendly to aggregate needs. Thank you very much.
I have Mr. Brown.
Only here is heated by the hour.
Okay, Ms. Dooley? Okay, we'll move on to 10 minutes from the Representatives and Valley Citizens for Water. If you'd please post the podium. Oh, excuse me. Before I do that, was there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the applicant? Please come forward.
Good morning, Chairman Ashida, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors. My name is David Schwartz. I'm from Dukor, 24470 Avenue 60. I'm president of Andromeda Transport Hauling Trucking Firm located down in Dukor. I've been in business for 26 years. I've done business with Cuyahoga River Rock during that entire time. Two things I'd like to bring up during this, during my testimony here is my relationship with Cuyahoga River Rock and what I believe, the people who run Cuyahoga River Rock, the relationship and their stewardship to the community and the county. I have, my business and I deal with about 30 different other rock, material suppliers, aggregate suppliers. I believe Cuyahoga River Rock is at the top of those who are good stewards, good citizens, and responsible in their providing of materials and being to the community too, as far as the relationship with Woodlake City, the cleaning up of their facility and the way they operate as well. I can't say enough about them. I only have so much time, I could speak eloquently on that subject. The second one, about the availability of materials, I was in contact with an aggregate producer in Ventura County just a week ago, and we talked about the crisis that's facing the state, about the supply of aggregate materials in the state. And, believe it or not, he said that we are going to be, if this isn't solved, we're going to be importing material from Canada in order to supply the needs of this state. That's not only removing jobs from the state and tax base from the state, it's also, it's going to provide tremendous transportation problems as we bring the material from the ports, San Francisco, Long Beach, or wherever, to supply materials in this state. I hope the board considers the economic, as well as economic, impact on the families that are involved, and I've heard a lot of people speaking for this project talk about their individual families, but I think it's, we've seen it in the timber industry, I think we're seeing it in the aggregate industry now. I think we've gone overboard on the environmental issues in this state and this area, and I respectfully request that you consider a positive vote on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak affirmative?
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Mike Burns, 4623 West Concord Avenue, Visalia. I manage an asphalt plant here in the county, Vulcan Materials Company. We've had many dealings with Mr. Harold and Mr. Alltucker. I've known Mr. Alltucker for about 25 years now, and he had a little bit more hair when I first met him also. But, I just want to say that my company also is in California. We have, we're the largest aggregate supplier in the United States. Up in Fresno, we have two rock pits, and we are currently trying to expand those quarries and find new aggregate sources, and I can tell you, there is a huge demand for aggregate in this area. If we don't do something about it now, as has been stated, we will be looking outside the area for supplies. We supply the Los Angeles County as of right now with aggregates from Bakersfield. They haul it into Ventura County, they haul it in from Palmdale to Sun Valley. It's not something we like to do, we have to do it because the supply is there, and that's where the aggregate is. The aggregate is here in our county, we have an obligation as citizens and as stewards of the land to go and get that and use all the mitigation opportunities available to us. I've seen the EIR, our engineers have seen the EIR, just because we like to keep up on what everyone's doing, and we think this project has been looked over and has had everything looked at that can be looked at, and all the mitigation has been done and will be done. I know Cuyahoga River Rock Company very well, they are very good stewards of the land, and I encourage your vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Julie Bigum. I am the chairperson for Valley Citizens for Water, PO Box 291, Woodlake, California. First of all, I'd just like to state that Valley Citizens for Water understands the need for aggregate. However, it is of vital importance to stay out of the heart of the aquifer, because we are in such an overdraft situation now, and I'm sure you understand that too. Because I'm only given 10 minutes, I'm going to have to quickly go over some of the new and changed information in this FREIR. The possibility of the endangered kit fox and burrowing owl on the site. The applicant's attorney writes a letter in Appendix 7 stating that adequate, the mitigation measure 3D-3 is now inadequate, and I have been in touch with the United States Fish and Game. They have not yet received their copy of the FEIR, and they do wish to comment on this in response to the responses to their comments. So, we need to take that into consideration. Other new information, they talk about French drain, we need more information on that. They talk about mitigation by design. Mitigation by design is not adequate. Under Appendix 6, under the mitigation measures and reporting program 3B-2 discusses the conservation easement as an option instead of the cancellation of the Williamson Act. In the Board of Supervisors' resolution in 2005, it states that the proposal is deemed impractical, infeasible, and ineffective as reflected in the public record. So, we request to find out what the status of the Williamson Act is now, and please explain the contradiction. The Department of Conservation has told me, well, let me tell you what they wrote. They said that the DEIR reclamation plan should be revised to clarify or address the issues raised in the OMR previous letter dated December, excuse me, May 28, 2004. What the Department of Conservation told me is that after, or if this project is approved, then they will get sometime this month, a new reclamation plan or changes to that. And so, we feel that it would be inappropriate, if you do approve this project, to approve this project with the reclamation plan. Since the OMR is going to get the information later, we request that there should be public comment and review, and it should not be approved as one package, because this is not in the spirit of CEQA. And, let's see. Lots of changes. I have here, and this is just, I'm just going through this, so it's going to sound like I'm jumping around. I have attached in my comments a letter per George Finney of an inter-office memo to Keith Woodcock dated December 15, 2003, and this is regarding the water. He states, I quote, "General comment. I noted a lot of stuff was taken out from the first draft in the Geohydro chapter. Why the changes?" Unquote. Then he goes on to comment on pages 3H42 through 3H55, but in the 2004 DEIR, there are 14 pages that are missing. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the flood issues. Regarding the flood issues, there needs to be some clarification. The proposed project is in the flood plain. Parts of the proposed project are in the floodways. Parts of the project are in special flood hazard areas. With the topographical changes and removal of Zone B, the majority of the proposed subject would be converted, converted to the special flood hazard area. The applicant agrees that the project is in a flood plain, however, they claim that they will not be inundated. Therefore, the applicant can circumvent FEMA Title 44 requirements to Tulare County flood ordinances and the State Reclamation Board of permitting process. The applicant can't just say, "We're not going to be inundated." So, flood plain measures do apply. Now, to bring back the letter from George Finney, I've got some more statements from him regarding flood. He states, first paragraph in the statement, that no designated floodway exists for the Cuyahoga River or the lower Cuyahoga River below Terminus Dam. This is incorrect. There are designated floodways in this area. Also, FEMA has identified floodways. There are floodways designated on the FEMA Cuyahoga Panel Number 8. We'll need to take sure, excuse me, we'll need to make sure that structures, overburn, and equipment are not located in the floodway. Mike Whitlock needs to advise to the extent which mining within the floodway, which extends to the south portion of the pit, may be permitted. George Finney again says, "References made to a flood plain encroachment analysis. This sounds like a deferred study, which we want to avoid, as a flood plain encroachment analysis would be necessary to fully analyze the flood plain impacts discussed in the In another paragraph, he goes on to state that mitigation measure 3H-9 refers to the subsequent flood plain encroachment analysis discussed above. Reliance on subsequent studies to make a less significant determination is not acceptable. So, we would like to know why the flood plain encroachment analysis was not done. And essentially, that's all I'm going to bring up now, because the time is very limited. I also, I have copies here for you. They include letters, the inter-office memorandum from George Finney and Keith Woodcock, excuse me, Mike Woodcock, that I have on the back here. I suggest that you read it in its entirety. I also have a comment letter here from my husband, and I wish to submit that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And who does this go to? Do I approach?
Okay. Now, we're going to hear from speakers in opposition to the proposed project, and please give your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dell Strange. I live at 20870 Avenue 322, Woodlake, California. And as we enter into another drought year in Tulare County, you are undoubtedly aware of how vital, how vital our water is in the county's agricultural economy and our very survival as human beings in this semi-arid region. The proposed surface mining project before us today is to be located in the most critical portion of the groundwater aquifer very near to its origin, where it is shallow and narrow and contains the center line of our groundwater flow westerly. There are viable sources of construction-grade aggregate material in the local foothills immediately east of the proposed site to supply our needs for hundreds of years into the future without destroying our precious water resources. They're available for the taking with little environmental impact. And contrary to this testimony earlier that you've heard, the cost is not exorbitant, as other mining operations in the foothills in hard rock mining are already successfully producing aggregate at a competitive cost. Notably, desert aggregates south of Porterville in the Fountain Springs area is producing top-grade aggregate material for Caltrans and many others at competitive cost. It's also interesting to note that Mr. David Harold, manager of Cuyahoga River Rock, made a public comment several years ago before the Tulare County Mineral Resources Policy Advisory Committee meeting right here in these chambers, that all future aggregate mining, sand and gravel, needs to be located in the local foothills of Tulare County. I couldn't agree with him more. So, one might ask, why are we currently going through this process when Cuyahoga River Rock could be applying for a permit to hard rock mine right here in our local foothills? Others are presently doing it with much success. It's hard to answer that question. It's right here for the taking. It's time to protect our water resources. It's time to locate our mining activities out of our water source and in the local foothills. The time is now. The rest of my comments are included in the written testimony, and the bottom line is, the EIR is woefully inadequate and fatally flawed, and the project as proposed for this location is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strange.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I have a brief letter. I tried to fax yesterday, but for some reason, I wasn't able to get through. I have a feeling it's more my fax machine than yours, but I'll give it to the clerk of the board. The new letter doesn't necessarily provide any additional or new information, it's a reply to the response to comments. I would say that, as your board considers this project, Valley Citizens for Water urges you to consider the sensitive nature of the site between two rivers, and also joins in the call of Mr. Manley to ensure that all the mitigation measures, particularly around water and air quality, involve specific, enforceable, easily understood, and easily verifiable compliance for all of the enforcement measures as required by CEQA. That's vitally important. The rest of my comments are included in the, in the letter, and so, in the interest of time, I'll leave that with you. Thank you, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in opposition of this project? Seeing none, are there any, anyone that does not have a position on the proposed project but wants to comment? I think Mr. Smalley did that early, so. Seeing none. We're going to take a recess. But quick, counsel.
Mr. Chair, you also have this listed on closed session for day. If you do want to go into closed session and ask any legal questions, we are available for your convenience to do that. Do you want to do that now, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then.
Well, we're going to closed session.
That closed session was, okay.
I wanted basically, I was basically, that was crap. Got to be done.
Shall I?
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 Okay, we're back in session.
Shall I?
There has been both written and verbal testimony submitted today, and I'm asking the applicant
Shall I?
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 if they want to, wish to respond to these issues that were raised today.
Shall I?
Shall I?
Shall I?
Shall I?
Shall I?
I would.
Shall I?
Shall I?
Thank you, supervisors.
Shall I?
Appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Shall I?
Once again, Whitmanley, Remi Thomas, Moose and Manley. I'm going to touch on some of the issues that were raised, and then Joe Countryman will come up here and respond to the issues that were touched on having to do with flooding. I haven't seen the letters before today that were submitted to you this morning. I have taken a look at them. It's of necessity been a pretty abbreviated read, but having looked at them, I can tell you they are all issues that have been vetted in the record already. I do want to respond to a couple of specific issues that were mentioned at the podium this morning. First of all, there were, was a concern that the mitigation for the kitfox and burrowing owl was not adequate. The kitfox and burrowing owl have not been seen on the site. Biologists surveyed the site earlier this year. They did not detect either of those species. They did conclude that the habitat of the site was such that those species could, they're very mobile, and they could decide to take up residence or forage on the site at some point in the future. And in order to deal with that possibility, mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project that were not part of the project in 2004. The concern was voiced that those mitigation measures are not adequate. Those mitigation measures are lifted directly out of detailed guidance that has been published by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Game, together with follow-up telephone calls to the Department of Fish and Game to make sure that the mitigation would meet their needs. I don't know what more one could do than that. The question was asked whether the Department of Fish and Game was provided a copy of the document. The answer is yes. In fact, we got, albeit late, but we did get comments from the Department of Fish and Game and responded to those comments. There was a concern expressed that, quote-unquote, "mitigation by design is inappropriate" under the California Environmental Quality Act. That's incorrect. The project that gets analyzed by the environmental consulting firm is the project as proposed. If the project incorporates features that are by design intended to address environmental concerns, then that's what you analyze. There's abundant case law confirming that that approach is appropriate. I want to address the Department of Conservation's input into the reclamation plan. There's a separate process, not under the California Environmental Quality Act, but under the Surface Mine and Reclamation Act, or SMERA, that requires that the Office of Mine Reclamation be provided an opportunity to review the reclamation plan, that if it addresses concerns about that, that those concerns get addressed. Once the comments were received from the Office of Mine Reclamation, the responses were provided in the revised final EIR. And in addition to that, Dave Brown, who prepared the reclamation plan, and Mike Rushton have had a series of communications and a meeting with the Office of Mine Reclamation to go over their concerns and to make sure that they would be addressed. There were certain revisions to the reclamation plan that the Office of Mine Reclamation has requested. The applicant has indicated that those are all fine, and it's a matter of Dave Brown turning around the reclamation plan so that it incorporates those suggestions. Exactly what those changes are are detailed in a letter that Mike Rushton provided to you this morning. We need to do that. We will do that. We are doing that. Should you, at some point in the future, decide to take up the reclamation plan for approval, the reclamation plan will be updated at that point to incorporate OMR comments. It will be an "OMR" quote-unquote blessed document when you see it. Question was asked about whether the Williamson Act contract is going to be canceled by way of rescission, which is a swap of agricultural easements, versus cancellation, which provides for the payment of a fee to the Department of Conservation. A petition for cancellation is on file with the county, and before any disturbance of the agricultural land occurs, we would have to come before your board and ask you to cancel that petition, uh, excuse me, cancel that contract. So cancellation is proposed. Recision is not proposed. Now, I should tell you, rescission is a perfectly lawful approach, as is cancellation. So from a legal
Okay, we're back to session. There has been both written and verbal testimony submitted today, and I'm asking the applicant if they want to wish to respond to these issues that were raised.
I would. Thank you, Supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to do that. Once again, Whit Manley, Remy Thomas, Musa Manley. I'm going to touch on some of the issues that were raised, and then Joe Countryman will come up here and respond to the issues that were touched on having to do with flooding. I haven't seen the letters before today that were submitted to you this morning. I have taken a look at them. It's of necessity been a pretty abbreviated read, but having looked at them, I can tell you they are all issues that have been vetted in the record already. I do want to respond to a couple of specific issues that were mentioned at the podium this morning. First of all, there was a concern that the mitigation for the kit fox and burrowing owl was not adequate. The kit fox and burrowing owl have not been seen on the site. Biologists surveyed the site earlier this year. They did not detect either of those species. They did conclude that the habitat of the site was such that those species could, they're very mobile, and they could decide to take up residence or forage on the site at some point in the future. And in order to deal with that possibility, mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project that were not part of the project in 2004. The concern was voiced that those mitigation measures are not adequate. Those mitigation measures are lifted directly out of detailed guidance that has been published by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Game, together with follow-up telephone calls to the Department of Fish and Game to make sure that the mitigation would meet their needs. I don't know what more one could do than that. The question was asked whether the Department of Fish and Game was provided a copy of the document. The answer is yes. In fact, we got, albeit late, but we did get comments from the Department of Fish and Game and responded to those comments. There was a concern expressed that quote-unquote "mitigation by design" is inappropriate under the California Environmental Quality Act. That's incorrect. The project that gets analyzed by the environmental consulting firm is the project as proposed. If the project incorporates features that are by design intended to address environmental concerns, then that's what you analyze. There's abundant case law confirming that that approach is appropriate. I want to address the Department of Conservation's input into the reclamation plan. There's a separate process, not under the California Environmental Quality Act, but under the Surface Mine and Reclamation Act, or SMERA, that requires that the Office of Mine Reclamation be provided an opportunity to review the reclamation plan, that if it addresses concerns about that, that those concerns get addressed. Once the comments were received from the Office of Mine Reclamation, the responses were provided in the revised final EIR, and in addition to that, Dave Brown, who prepared the reclamation plan, and Mike Rushton have had a series of communications and a meeting with the Office of Mine Reclamation to go over their concerns and to make sure that they would be addressed. There were certain revisions to the reclamation plan that the Office of Mine Reclamation has requested. The applicant has indicated that those are all fine, and it's a matter of Dave Brown turning around the reclamation plan so that it incorporates those suggestions. Exactly what those changes are are detailed in a letter that Mike Rushton provided to you this morning. We need to do that. We will do that. We are doing that. Should you, at some point in the future, decide to take up the reclamation plan for approval, the reclamation plan will be updated at that point to incorporate OMR comments. It will be an "OMR" quote-unquote blessed document when you see it. Question was asked about whether the Williamson Act contract is going to be canceled by way of rescission, which is a swap of agricultural easements, versus cancellation, which provides for the payment of a fee to the Department of Conservation. A petition for cancellation is on file with the county, and before any disturbance of the agricultural land occurs, we would have to come before your board and ask you to cancel that petition, excuse me, cancel that contract. So cancellation is proposed. Rescission is not proposed. Now, I should tell you, rescission is a perfectly lawful approach, as is cancellation. So from a legal perspective, both those things are on the table, but at this point, cancellation is being proposed. Finally, there was an endorsement of finding other sources of aggregate in the region, in particular, hard rock mining in the foothills. Now, this issue was not litigated before Judge Vortman, and therefore, the analysis back in the 2004 EIR is presumptively adequate. But I want to let you know that there was an extensive alternatives analysis in that EIR. It included alternatives aimed at hard rock mining in the foothills. That analysis concluded that those alternatives would have greater impacts than this project, and would also require more energy, more traffic, more air pollution to haul the aggregate here. Those are sources of supply, but developing them has economic and environmental costs. That's what the EIR concluded. So with that, I'd like to turn things over to Joe Countryman. Thank you.
Joe Countryman, President MBK Engineers located at 2450 Alhambur Boulevard in Sacramento, California. I have two things. One, there was a statement made that the property is in the state reclamation's designated floodway. That is not true. I brought the state designated floodway maps, and I'll leave them with the secretary that clearly showed the property is not within the designated floodway. Secondly, we did a hydrology, hydraulics analysis of this project with today's hydrology. When I say today's, I mean the fact that Terminus Dam's flood space has been significantly increased with the core construction project up there, which reduced the 100-year outflow from 46,000 to 18,000 CFS, which is completely carried within the channels of the Cui and the St. John's River. We provided a hydraulic analysis that clearly shows that. So it is not in the current 100-year floodplain, in our opinion. The FEMA maps have not been revised yet, which use the old flow numbers. So the project as proposed will use those maps, but be in compliance with the county ordinance reference to the floodplain management. So even though the floodplain's changed, the project as proposed is in compliance with the county ordinance. That's all.
If you please give those to her, Clerk.
Should you have any questions? We're happy to entertain them, but with that, we appreciate your time and patience, and we'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Ms. Begum, in range, you'd like to rebuttal the... No. Thank you. Hey, staff, would you please give your recommendations to the board?
Again, our recommendation is pretty much as spelled out in the agenda item to the Board of Supervisors, specifically recommending that you close the public testimony phase and continue the hearing to a date certain, to enable staff to prepare the appropriate documentation to deny the appeal by Valley Citizens for Water regarding the Planning Commission's approval of the mining permit, and also to certify the environmental impact reports, and that's both of the reports as a single integrated document. Because of the testimony we see, we would also like to suggest that you need to allow for receipt of the letter from OMR before your next meeting. And we want to make sure from the staff level that the OMR will not be recommending changes to the reclamation plan that would not require a public hearing. If that's the case, then, of course, we'll report to you back at that time. And I believe we can get all this done in two weeks.
Okay, before I bring this matter back to the board, I have to make a clerical correction here that the record to show that the opposition of this project had no, did not have a rebuttal. Okay, I want to bring it back to the board. Questions and discussion?
You just close the public testimony?
Oh. That's not on my... Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
You're going to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
Closing the public testimony of the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, let's bring the matter back to the board. Questions and discussion?
Chairman, I look around, and everybody up here is different than when I was here. The matter first came before the Board of Supervisors, and I was the junior member on the board at the time when it came up. I believe it was 16 years in the making at that time when it came before us. I don't remember Dave Harold with red hair, but I remember when he had a little bit more hair, perhaps. And it was quite a different meeting at that time, where we had the building completely filled, and expert testimony on both sides of the issue, some concerns about the Cui River Conservation District and the project as it was proposed at that time. And that was denied, and the project applicant went back and to the drawing boards, bought a new project forward, came back before through the Planning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors. And at that time, it was a less public event, I guess you might say, than it had been the first time. Have gone through the legal process and further refined the issues to an even, we just sort of see this winnowing down of, if you will, of starting out with so many issues, and now we're down to just a very few issues. I am convinced that they have been adequately addressed as we sit here today. And leaving aside the necessity and the need for the aggregate need in our community and our surrounding area, believe that this project needs to go forward on the basis of the environmental work that has been done and the findings that have been made. And I am prepared at this time, if there's no further comments from my colleagues, to make a motion, but certainly would be glad to defer to any comments they might want to make.
Nothing significant, probably. It's just when I came on this board, which was after you, Supervisor, as you so put, I spent a lot of time reading previous testimony and listening to tapes and trying to come up to speed on this issue, and still it continues. As far as this morning, I, we've heard and seen some facts, and then we've heard a lot of opinion. And I am of like mind with you that I believe the overriding considerations are here and recognized, and no reason not to move forward. So if you had a motion, I would second that.
Chairman, there's no further comment. I would move that we would render a tentative decision today and bring this matter back in two weeks for giving our staff an opportunity to present the proper findings, that we would deny the appeal filed by the Valley Citizens for Water regarding the Planning Commission approval for surface mining project number PMR 02-002, that we certify our review and consideration of the information contained in the final revised environmental impact report and the previous final environmental impact report as a single integrated document prepared for PMR 02-002. Approve the final EIR for the Cui South Project, SCH 2002-051039s being in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt the project findings and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and a statement of overriding considerations. And approve the surface mining project reclamation plan, PMR 02-002, subject to conditions of mitigation measures, and also subject to receipt of a letter, which we anticipate receiving based upon test information given to our staff from the Office of Mines and Reclamation, which we understand will be supportive of the reclamation plan. In the event that that letter is otherwise, this matter might become back before this board for, and we submit on that particular issue alone. And then ask the matter to be brought back to us in two weeks from today.
That was a motion. This is a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. You can't vote. Hey, the motion passes four with one abstention. And that concludes our board meeting today.
Close session.
We, how still do we have need for closed session?
Yes, we do still have need for closed session. Let me pull out my book here. We've held closed session, which was item D. We need to have closed sessions on items A and C is listed on your agenda, item F is listed on your agenda, and item H is listed on your agenda. We are going to pull the closed sessions listed as items E, G, and I. So we do have need for closed session. And there will be no reports out. Okay.
Thank you.